I just been banging on my phone. That grill blast worked. All right, call to order the Trinity County Supervisors Meeting of November 6th. Bobby, would you lead us in pledge?
Yes, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, on to public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda, however, the chair may refer the matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on the subsequent board agenda. Red, come on up.
All right. My name is Terry Nagle from Hayfork. And as I said, I'd be back to find out what you might have found out for yourself. As you said, you can direct someone to the appropriate line. So are you going to let me know if you want my license or where do we stand here?
Counselor, we have turned, I turned the matter over to Richard and he's working on it, but it's not the appropriate time, correct?
That'd be correct, because you want staff to follow up with afterwards, that would be appropriate.
Okay, so after the meeting, please contact Richard and he's...
Okay, so I've been unemployed for basically since late July with this, this whole thing. I went with Richard and he hasn't responded to an email for over a month, I believe. So what do you want me to do?
I, we will, after the meeting, I guess me, Richard, and you will sit down and talk, how's that?
A meeting at what time, I mean?
Well, I can't give you a time, because when the meeting's over.
Can I get a call and come back?
Yes, that would be...
Why don't you give your number to the deputy clerk?
Okay. I got hundreds of signatures here just for a simple thing, which is if my license is pulled away, then the jurisdiction over my trailer should be pulled away. Unless we're trying to tell people, I mean, you know, the license is for preparing food inside the trailer. So I stopped that the day the lady came by and took my license. So all I did is leave a person in there to take orders from people for their convenience. And then she comes back and threatens to impound my trailer. But where does her jurisdiction continue? I mean, it's ridiculous. So I hope you guys get this together, thank you. Seven three nine? Nine three six six. Approximately?
Uh, noonish.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else?
Hello, Kevin Manassas in Hayfork. I didn't see any other cannabis stuff on the agenda, is this a good term?
We have the manufacturing on the agenda, so any other cannabis issues?
Okay, yeah, this is a little different. Okay, I want to thank all you guys for your help and I appreciate the quick action on the issue I had. I'm sorry, I broke down talking to you on your phone. My wife was just tearing apart over this thing. Anyway, an issue I have, and I heard a couple things at planning, I don't know if they're right or not, maybe you can tell me. I'm told that now in order to apply for the micro business license, you actually have to hold three licenses before you can apply for the micro business license? I don't know if that's being explained to me correctly or not, like I would already have to have, I have my cultivation. I would have to have my transport license done, I would have to have mine type nine done, and I would have to have some type of distribution. I would have to already have those done before I can apply for the micro, that didn't make sense. Why would I go through the whole process of getting those licenses just to scale back to a micro? I don't know if there's some confusion between here and there or what, that's what I was told. I talked to Leslie, we're going to meet after, and she wasn't aware of that either, but that's what I was told by planning. I'm also told that you guys are banning co-ops, is that correct? Where us farmers can't work together to share our expenses, to have, to work together to battle against these outside distribution people? Because there's no distribution in Trinity County now. Outside distribution is making us sign five-year contracts with them before they will deal with us. That means no processor or distribution person in this county will have product to work with. You guys said you had to have 75% Trinity County product to operate with? It's not going to be available. These guys are up here signing all us farmers up to these five-year contracts now. I resisted because I want to do the micro, I can't operate that way. But I'm going to have to go that other way if I'm not able to get my micro business temporary license at the state by the next month. I'm going to lose the four-month grace period. I already lost the three-month extension period. I got to be able to get authorization to apply at the state level for the micro business, or it's just not going to happen. And you guys are forcing us all into the out-of-county distributors' pockets. No one here is going to be able to operate one, and we're handcuffed already by them, and they're, they're going to have us in their pocket, and Trinity County's not going to make nothing off of it, so...
Kevin, are you going to be around this afternoon?
I'll hang around as long as I need to.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Erin Dunn, I'm from Fortuna, California. And I'm the new field representative for Assemblymember Jim Wood. And I wanted to introduce myself to you and give a face to a name and let you know that I'm looking forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Do you have some cards you can give to?
I'm so new, I don't have cards yet, but I'll be back next month and I'll have them there. Okay, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chair members of the board, Tom Valanco, Douglas City. Let's bring this, those of you keeping score, for 34 days, no news. Anyway, it is under the specter of that dysfunction that I am hesitant to address one more need we have. Sorry to do it, but I see some of the cultivation amendments coming forward. We went to a very lengthy PC meeting to just delve into some of those. I think high up on the list of issues is this concept of license stacking. I certainly support that, I know a lot of people do, some people see it as adding licenses. I understand it goes with the same number of licenses that have always been available. But a problem that presents itself in the county involves the processing of cannabis. Even if, say, I have a piece of property and I stack three licenses on it. Now, I don't want to, if I get three 10,000s on one piece of property and I have one new, nice, permitted ADA compliant barn in there that I intend to process in. By the operation of state regs, I'm not allowed to cross premises lines. So I can only process the cannabis grown on the license that is in the same premises as that barn. If I wanted to take, even if there was another 10,000 right next door, if I wanted to bring in from that garden under a different premises, I'd have to have a processor license. It's kind of a new thing, it's, it would seem like it's a manufacturing, but it's run by CDFA, it's under cultivation licenses. I looked and I don't see it in our county ordinances. I urge us to follow the example of the self-transport license that I think we saw, which is a great approach to kind of where appropriate, kicking the ball over to the state and saying, you know, if you're in the program and this fits, and you get your state license, let's do it that way. So I would suggest we take a look at that, I know, I don't exactly know what happened with the cultivation amendments, but I do think license stacking's a good idea, but I think it would be ideal if we could allow the processing on the same facility and one, otherwise the approach would be you'd have to build three separate facilities for each of those gardens. So processor license under CDFA regs and simplicity rules. Thank you.
I've been trying to get a follow-up on Mr. Valanco's letter that he has raised. And is anybody getting back to him? He has questions and sent emails, no one has responded.
And I don't know the answer to that, but I can look into it.
If we can get an answer by this afternoon, because all the players are here today.
We sound good.
All right, anybody else? All right, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters and noted upon the board by one or a call motion. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item to be pulled and considered separately. Ms. Chadwick?
Yeah.
Ms. Morris? Ms. Lyons? And none from me. Anything from staff? Anything from the public? Wow, never dare.
The chair motion to approve this, such as presented.
First and the second?
Steve Reddy Morris?
Yes.
Steve Reddy Penney?
Yes.
Steve Reddy Chandler? Steve Reddy Morris? Yes, Steve Reddy Bruce?
Aye. All right, we'll move on to reports and announcements, reports from the Fertinets. All right, Chris?
Good morning. As you're all aware, obviously Bruce Haney has retired, Sheriff Haney has retired. Subsequently, out of that came a press release, to which I wanted to address this. The press release talked about his retirement, it also talked about the fact that I was appointed. The press release was done in error, and I wanted to acknowledge that I understand that the role that I'm in comes from statute, and you guys are the only ones that are appointed, or can appoint. So I wanted to apologize for any problems that may have caused, just in case. The press release has been pulled and it should no longer be a problem, but that is why I'm here.
Thank you, question? Any other department heads? Nope, they're all shaking their head, looking away from me, all right. Report from the county administrative officer. Okay, from the members of the board supervisors. Start off with Bobby, is that a great story?
Yes, so I'm freshly back from Washington DC. The present administration under Trump, President Trump, has engaged with all 50 states. California, Alaska, and Hawaii were the last three of the states. Every elected official was invited to go. As it turned out, we were to meet with nine officials. That included the Cabinet Secretary, Intergovernmental Affairs, Department of Interior, Department of Transportation, the Environmental Protection Agency, the US Department of Veterans Affairs, and the US Department of Agriculture, as well as a special assistant to the President and Deputy Director in Intergovernmental Affairs. Kellyanne Conway was one of the speakers on the opioids. And we had a special guest drop by for about 20 minutes. President Donald Trump graciously came. And it was an incredible opportunity to meet with other people from California, Hawaii, and also Alaska. There's a lot of things that this administration is really hoping to achieve. And one of them is to have better support and understanding with the local officials. So I just want to report out that it was an incredible event. They allowed us to tour the White House as a group, and I think there was six, maybe seven security checks that we had to go through, and I'm sure I don't need an exam for years to come. But it was a delight to be able to represent Trinity County. And Shasta Lesba actually did a presentation to, and gave an award to President Trump, which was interesting because nobody knew he was going to be there, so I think he brought it and was going to give it to someone. But I think that was recorded, and so it was in response to the car fire and this administration's urgency to get back to us all and understand how devastating that fire was. So that was kind of one of our local guys being able to actually present to the President. So thank you for allowing me to represent Trinity County on this incredible event.
Well, thank you for taking the time to go on about it.
Thank you.
Ms. Morris?
Let's see. Out of County Travel, as Vice Chair of Government and Finance for CSAT. Our chair was, that chair of that committee was unable to attend, but CalPERS hosted a meeting for electives on the roving, moving ball of the retirement system for the state of California. Many counties have received notices of new approaches of how counties are to pay along with cities. So it was somewhat enlightening. Well, we'll learn more in the months to follow, but that was helpful to know. Also, although it wasn't out of County Travel, we hosted a CRP here a couple of weeks ago. About 80 people attended from the region. Quite a privilege to chair that organization. We had Assemblymember Wood join us, some other folks from the state, some economic development issues and funding sources, so our organization can continue to fund the various projects we have funded over the last 12 years. Prop 3 does not have a ton of money for urban organizations such as SCRP, which is, a lot of our past fundings come from compositions of water bond type stuff. Lewiston was represented, the chief, Mel Pirdor, attended, and thanked the group for the money that we have awarded to that organization after they certainly applied and went through quite a process over the years. I think since 14, 2014, we have attributed, contributed about a half million dollars to the Intertight Project. And so he was there, our state folks were there to hear how important that money was to their efforts, particularly who knew with the fire that rolled through there and helped them with some water supply. And I'm doing it in a very simple, describing this in a very simple way, but he was very grateful and gave the group a big thanks, so...
Supervisor Mike?
Out of County Travel, on the 25th, I attended NorTech in Anderson. And the next day, I met with Debbie Dakota down at Smart Center in YOQIS.
Okay, and I had no out-of-county trouble. Okay, reports from the ad-hocs. Anything on cannabis legislation? Everybody?
Oh, I will say, although it's not quite legislation, our ad hoc, there's, is certainly getting, coming down to the state as this December 1st deadline. So of course we're going to look at that and how that affects license holders from the state, so...
Okay, well, I'll throw that into the commercial county ordinances, anything else?
Of course, we have some of the minor amendments to manufacturing. Manufacturing is already approved, these are just amendments we will be discussing today. Cultivation amendments of as many as have, we've heard from. First was at the PC last week, I believe, or two weeks ago. We will be looking at that through ad hoc, so that may be going back to the PC. We're still, we will be connecting with staff for further discussion on those items.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Bob, how much longer will the ad hoc be going on? How many more ordinances do you have to put together?
Well?
We have, so we have two that have not been completed. One is the, we've waited for the fairgrounds to see if they want to be in the festival business. And they, yeah, talked about it, but have not requested that at the county. So that one is totally unhold, and then the next one would be the retail, which would be the one that we're starting to work on now. And that would complete the list of ordinances, but it depends on cleanup or amendments as this process.
So we're getting toward the end?
We are getting towards the end.
You're seeing light, okay, at this point, I'd like to request an accounting of how much money has gone into this process over the past couple of years. Costs for attorneys, costs for time, costs for manpower, meetings, and all that kind of stuff out of County Travel. I can get it together later with, and I'm sure a few other supervisors might also, and some public, get together later with CAO to start adding up what we'd like to see from this ad hoc committee.
Well, we don't contribute extra.
No, you don't, not at all, but you do take up time.
Your time is there. So we have requested on several occasions to get an accounting.
Can I get a clarification though, please, regarding ad hoc? No, just cannabis, yes, yes. And, you know, where the revenue, where the people, where revenues coming from to pay for the ad hoc and what they do and different directors and county council and everybody that comes out of it. Also, any outside attorneys that we've used, object or purpose of travel. And, you know, just an accounting like, like we'd request for anyone else. Thank you. Next board meeting would be fantastic, thank you.
So your player, Richard, don't know what he's asking for?
Yes, sir.
All right, do you have anything to add to that question?
Uh, nothing else.
Okay. All right, on to the new jail, we have the plans coming up. Is that, we want to report on it?
No, it was, it was in the consent calendar to move the jail and the board, both the state and our...
Okay.
I do have a question about the jail ad hoc, when was the last one at?
Last one I remember was with Sheriff Haney, and it was at probation.
Yeah, I would say last November or October.
Well, I would request, if you two wouldn't mind, just maybe a monthly check-in and just to see on progress, so we can stay on.
I agree, especially from what's been going, gone, I agree.
Could be 10-minute, you know, just checking in on where we're at.
All right. Willerness oversight, do you want to have a movement?
No movement, no dates, no nothing.
Okay.
We'll see what happens. I had a meeting with Joseph Bauer yesterday.
Okay.
Oh, so that's where that request comes from?
No, no, absolutely, oh, no, 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 we can talk in a minute about that one.
Okay.
The threats are there.
County matters. These items include non-retainer controversy matters and are listed alphabetically by department, a member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be heard out of order. Ms. Morris, which item did you want to move, the plane 37?
No, I mean, that's fine, it's in the middle of the pack. Fair with me, Chair, I was just trying to move a couple things up so people could get on their way, because some items may take a little longer. So if we could maybe move, need to put 3.1 toward the end, where some of these other ones, I think we have a code enforcement field request, exemption, we have the Title III. I think, yeah, the Veteran's Service Operation Plan, maybe we can move them up.
Thanks for your specific. Okay, we'll move...
Do you not want specific?
No, I want specific. We'll move 3.8 to the first item. And we will do 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and then 3.1. And then we'll go to 3.5 and follow down. So item 3.8, unless there's any objections going up, report. 3.8, approved Veterans, Trinity County Veteran's Service Operation Plan for 2018, 2019.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This is my last official meeting with you.
That's why we wanted to move you up, so you could go out and get some things, get along with your life.
I'm going to stick around until the end of January to take care of some, end of half a fiscal year stuff for CalVet and give HR time to buy the replacement. What I'd like to do is, this morning, is briefly review the county veteran profile. Talk briefly about the veteran services provided, and also some CalVet changes that impact on the county. And how service has changed over the last 70 years that I've been veteran service officer. According to the VA and to CalVet, we have 1,523 veterans that reside in Trinity County. My analysis, based on some other data that I've collected, is that about 90% of the veterans in the county are men. The average age is 50-plus. We have a lot of Vietnam vets here in Trinity County. One of the issues that's become very apparent this year is we have a lot of these aging veteran families are waiting too long to come in and ask for assistance. I've been seeing this monthly. I don't know what the answer to this is. The VA is trying to do something to help that, but it's ground up and the federal legislative process has to do with funding for family members to provide care or a care provider to be reimbursed for that. Don't know when that money's going to show up. 27% of the men over the age of 18 in Trinity County are veterans, which is a kind of an interesting number. We have 286 vets that are receiving either disability compensation or pensions, VA non-service connected pensions. And the total amount is worth $5,000, $5,875,000 a year that's going to the veterans in the county. That's 18% of the veterans. The number is down this year from last year, and that's due to deaths and out-migration. We have 400 veterans using VA healthcare, that's 26% of the veterans in the county. The vets in Hayfork are allowed to use veteran... The vets in Hayfork are allowed to use Veterans Choice to receive their primary care locally. And we still have the twice-a-year mobile clinic that comes to the vets' hall in Weaverville that's here in April, and we just finished up four days in October. They're seeing anywhere from 50 to 60 veterans with each visit up here. The source of my referrals, primarily from Health and Human Services, I'm getting two to three every week. These are veterans that are going to the eligibility office and they're applying for Medi-Cal. There's a variety of reasons why they're applying for Medi-Cal. Some of it has to do with family members that are on. I see a number of them that already have and use VA healthcare, a number of them already have disability-related issues and use the VA healthcare system. Driver's licenses is another source of referral. Now that you can get veterans to put on your driver's license, they come to see me for me to provide them a form. I get to talk to them about, hey, what else is going on for you? Do we need to do a claim or something else? VA docs is another source. I mentioned the older veterans. So the VA docs are referring some of these vets that already have disability claims to come back and see me so we can update that disability claim and they may get increased compensation. Last year, I had 173 in-person visits, 149 phone contacts, did 29 claims for compensation and pensions last year. That was worth about $178,670,000 to those veterans when the claims were approved. General information that I put out, CalVet home loans, VA home loan guarantees, VA healthcare, VA education and training, the CalVet tuition-free waiver program for a dependent of a veteran that has at least a 30% disability, Veterans Cemetery in Higo, and information about the veterans home in Redding as well. In the last seven years, since 2012, when I became the VSO, everything was on paper, had a file cabinet full of paper forms. At that time, we used to notify the Veterans Benefits Administration and they'd send us packets of these things. Now, the summer of that year, CalVet rolled out the VetPro program from Panoramic Software and we signed up for that and we did away with all the paper stuff. So all the applications, everything, all that stuff is in the VetPro program. So we're doing that all online now. The veteran still has to sign the forms. We print them in many cases and mail them in, depending on where they need to go. In 2012, the Veteran's Service Officer just had to be a veteran with some knowledge of the claims and pension process. My own experience, I'd been the Veteran's Service Officer for the BFW post here for two years, but my experience was about this broad. Over the past seven years, both CalVet and the VA have required that all Veteran's Service Officers become accredited with the VA to be a provider of service and to be recognized by the VA. So there's now a CalVet accreditation exam. It's open book, but the book is CFR 38 CFR Code of Federal Regulations. It's about this thick. The real test is, can you find the answers in that CFR? That's the real challenge. And CalVet now provides a Veteran's Service Officer Academy to prepare Veteran's Service Officers. That's new in the last two years. So that's a three-dayer, and it seems to be working very well. In 2012, the average time for processing of a simple VA claim was one year plus. There was such a backlog of claims to get through that. Today, it's two to three months for a simple one-issue claim and we can have the results back. Non-service connected pensions, which end up going to the VA Pension Center in St. Paul, we get those back within three to four weeks. In 2012, the way I got reports back on awards from the VA for veterans, I had to call CalVet in Oakland and ask them to send me the award correspondence. In 2019, next calendar year, all the award information, all the appeal information, all the compensation and pension exam results will all be in the Veterans Benefits Management System. It'll all be online. So more of the paper is going away. It's all going to be there. The challenge is going to be being able to link up VetPro with the Veterans Benefits Management System so we don't have to print something, scan it, and then enter it in. In 2012, VA Healthcare was planning to replace the Weaverville Mobile Clinic with bus service. We were able to successfully kill that, working with the new director of the clinic in Redding. Today, we still have the mobile clinic. Hayfork vets are using VA Healthcare and have primary care available in Hayfork. On the horizon, VA funding for assisted living costs are out there. The issue is with Congress, they can't figure out where to get the money from. So until that is resolved and is signed off by the current administration, who is not in favor of that, that's kind of where we're at. I want to thank all of you for the assistance and support that you've given me the last few years and prepared to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Yes.
Just one.
Hi. Go ahead. Patrick, I just can't thank you enough. Your service to the vets of our county has just been incredible. I've not received one complaint over the years. You've helped many, many vets get their services as they are required and had been maybe not even aware that was they were entitled to. So whoever sits in your shoes has some big shoes to fill because I don't know that you can be replaced. So thank you for your service to our county and to the vets of the county. I have no questions. You always give a great report.
I do have one question and thank you for your report. I believe in the 2016-17 year, the Hmong who had fought along with the Vietnam warriors were going to be recognized as veterans. I was wondering if that has come to fruition? And if it has, has there been an outreach to the Hmong community in Trinity County?
There is nothing that I am aware of that that has moved forward.
Okay. Thank you.
One thank you again. Judy's absolutely right. I've never had one complaint. The story's talked.
I can find a couple for you.
You've done well in hiding them, so thank you again. We'll miss you. We look forward to the rest of the year. It says approve.
All right, so move.
Favors signified by Saint I.
Aye.
Aye, pose the same side. All right. So on to 3.2, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 8.90.7.170, considered to ever Elliot's request for exemption from code enforcement appeal, $1,050 for notice of violation 000282, potential loss of revenue, general fund is amount of $1,050.
I'm happy to handle this one. And this is a standard request for a waiver of cost on the notice of appeal?
Can we first clarify the violation number?
Absolutely. Please.
The corrected violation number is 00371.
So the violation number was in this right on that. Okay, now, thank you.
I apologize for jumping ahead. This is a standard appeal process. If you recall, we haven't done one of these in a while. The applicant for the waiver has an opportunity to state their case before the board as to why they believe the fees in the amount of $1,050 should be waived. The Deputy Clerk of the Board will swear him or her end before the process begins.
Is she here today? Nope, okay. Could you just go outside to make sure that she's not in the lobby?
And while she's doing that, I have a clarification. You're saying the violation number was 00371 and it's not the notice of appeal regarding 00371? I'm seeing two different numbers.
Let's wait for the Deputy Clerk. It's her correction, but I believe it's the notice of violation number.
Bobby, a question for you?
So you corrected the violation notice at the top, 000282, because in two other places it has 00371. So just the one. Okay. Thank you.
Right, Counselor?
I, you're for motion.
So I just wanted to make clear that for the record, she is not here. And we now move to motion. There's no public comment?
There can be public comment if it's the board's pleasure. But when an individual does not pursue their appeal, it typically is a denial per code. But we'll allow the board to make that formalized.
Okay. All right, yes, John.
Make a motion to deny 3.2 as presented. Notice of violation is 00371 for the citation.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Is this a roll call?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Maybe not.
Yeah, let's go ahead since we have delay in a second.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Chavlin?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye. All right, on to 3.3, which is grants continue to December 4th, 2018. Select proposals for the 45-day advertising period pursuant to Title III, Secure Rural Schools and Community Self-Determination Act 2000, up to $90,000 in total through funds. So that will be continued till the 4th. 3.4, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.41, posse A, authorized hiring a grants coordinator II at level range N225, step E, in the administrative department effective November 1st, 2018. Proximate cost and salary and benefits per month for a grants coordinator II at 60%. At step A is $4,901 and at step E is $5,794. Shall I?
Sean Nelson, HR Director. So the county administration department has been about a grants division for approximately four years. And during that time, they had a consultant on contract. On March 20th of this year, you, the board, approved allocating a grants coordinator one or two position in the department. And so we did two recruitments for this position and was finally successful in finding a qualified applicant. We're here today asking if you would consider allowing them to offer this at an E-step based on the individual's extensive years, 18 years of experience. In this staff report, it lists all the various different things that they have experience in doing. We've also had this individual contracted with two of our departments for a few years. Feel that they would be qualified and should be recognized at that salary level.
Okay. Richard, you want to add anything to that?
No, I just confirm that the person that we have chosen, I've worked with in the past also in Chester County and is probably one of the best that I've ever worked with regarding grants and has received, I think, an excessive, around, let's say, $22 million in grants and has connections throughout the state. So I support the recommendation.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I do, so, sorry, my information just disappeared, but, thank you. Sorry. So is this a full-time position? Did I mention?
I believe so.
Or just one?
Twenty-two, so, twenty-three votes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Court time? All right. That was, just a question. Thank you.
Lobby, any?
No.
All right, well, that will open it up to the public on 3.4. Any comments?
I presume you're talking about Suzie Coons, is that correct?
Coco.
Yeah.
Hope you don't talk about them. We're not allowed to announce the names of individuals for us.
I did, I'm sorry. All I can say is we've received at the Foo Fang tremendous support from her, why she's the director of First Five in Trinity, and she has a reputation that is spread across the North State about somebody that's active in the grant field. And we'd like to support this effort.
All right, any other public comment? With that, we'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve 3.4 as presented.
I'll second.
All those favors signified by Saint I?
Aye.
Pose the same side? All right, now, back to 3.1. Introduce and waive the reading of the ordinance, amending the Trinity County Code Section 108 and leaving Section 2.04 pertaining to the board's supervisors, approximately $6,057 per month for all five board members combined.
Chair, I'm happy to start this one off and just provide some background in terms of why this is presented to you as an ordinance and the part reflecting the fact that this is a combining of several ordinance that we currently have. The Constitution requires, under Article 11, Section 1, the, that any modifications or any establishment of compensation or terms and conditions of employment for supervisors be done through an ordinance subject, of course, to referendum. And so that is what's presented before you today. There were, in the current ordinance, there are the references to supervisors is somewhat spread out over multiple different sections. There's also an attempt here to combine that and make one section so the public will have one place to go specifically to look about terms and conditions for supervisors. And so that's, you know, that was my involvement in it and I wanted to provide the background in terms of the law that requires us to do it this way.
Okay, Richard?
Yes, and regarding the increase in salaries to the board members. Throughout our 18-19 budget process, the, this is the ad hoc, reviewed all the county departments and determined what was in the budget and what was available to county departments. And after reviewing all the departments and making the recommendations, the committee went back and reviewed board salaries, note that every county department receives an increase in general fund contributions in 18-19 budget from the actuals of 17-18. So this money was not taken from the department, was not set aside or pulled from funding to other departments. It was money that was available after we reviewed all the other county departments. So we reviewed the supervisor's salary and found that they have not received a increase since 2001. Further. Further reviewing this, we realized that as of January 2019, our board members will be the lowest paid staff in the county. And I find that a little disheartening that this board, it is tasked with making the most important decision to be the lowest paid staff in Trinity County. So with that, we made the recommendation in the budget process to increase the salaries of the board. Do you have to ask any questions?
John?
Who is we?
It is the budget committee.
Who is part of the budget committee?
It was our auditor, our contractor, Craig, myself, Suzie, two board members, Morris and Rose. I believe that was the sixth member.
Kind of have a problem with the budget committee, including two supervisors being involved with this, but that's my problem. I can't, do you want to wait for comments afterwards, or?
Yeah, here. This is question period?
Yeah, question period. What is, so the total cost of it, $50,000?
Correct.
And what percentage of that is of our current salary? 40%?
It costs a 40% increase, correct.
A 40% increase?
Yes.
Okay. And this $50,000, you can't find anywhere else to use it in the county?
I can always find places to, but we felt this was the most appropriate.
Including the two board members?
The committee, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
All right, any other questions here? All right, well, that will, is that a question?
Yes, sorry. So this is about 30, just 50% below a class in the area.
If it was approved, it would put you somewhere, the board's position somewhere between 65% to 75% of what other boards receive in North State.
Were you able to include Tahama in that?
I believe we used Tahama, yes.
Yes, Tahama.
Thank you. Yes, Tahama.
All right, open it up to the public.
I'm Harvey Weverville again, just to make you guys happy. I vote for it. Can't vote, yeah. So if I ever wanted to run for board of supervisors, I certainly would have better salary than you guys are getting.
Why, Mr. Chairman? Board Tom Belenko, Douglas City. I'm just back from one of my side projects. I am still an attorney for the Abwala Su tribe on various cases. It is a board of 13, if you include the chair, members that represent districts in what is widely regarded as the poorest county in the United States. It's Shannan County in South Dakota. I think 85% of people live below the poverty line. The tribal council members who have a job not dissimilar from your own, they have a county council, or, excuse me, a tribal council. They meet once a month. They certainly are responsible for their districts. It's a reservation population of about 30,000 people. And they make about $64,000 a year. And that is not the cause of poverty on the reservation. That is, you know, I have three minutes and that's a different, so, okay. But I think there's no doubt this job functions as a full-time job, particularly for the five of you. So, you know, you're entitled to at least a livable wage to do that job. I think this is a good use of money for the county, and I would encourage you to pass it. Thanks.
Any other public comment? That will come back to the board. I do want to make one clarification for you, John, that the two supervisors did not come up with the money. This was planned, the amounts, the plan was proposed by the CAO as he looked at this process and then he.
Yeah, I'd like to, for the, because do the process, I have to represent my budgets and my budgets of the board. So make the proposal from the administration's budget.
Okay, with that, any other?
I'm waiting to see if you're ready to accept a motion, Chair.
I am.
I would make a motion to accept. Answer.
I second.
Do we have any?
I have a subsequent order to discuss.
You can do subsequent.
Okay, I'd like to make a subsequent motion to include the changes to the ordinance that clarifies and makes a little bit more sense regarding the areas that were discussed in the ordinance. And I'd like to change the date of this being effective and not revoked from active as it would be, back to June, July. I'd like to make it, make the salary change go into effect. Election year '20 was service starting in '21 for districts 2, 3, and 5. And have the salary adjustment go into effect for districts 1 and 4 in '04 and '05, election year '04, starting serving in '05.
Okay, did everybody understand that?
No. No. '04, '05?
Okay, so let me paraphrase here that the, everything stays the same, that the salary, the salary would not increase until actually each one of our offices has been either re-elected or vacated.
Correct.
So, since my term and District 4's term will be up in four years, as of January 1, that's when it will take effect. The three of you's terms is up in two years, and that's when that will take effect, is John's motion.
Correct, thank you.
Do we have a second? Okay, no second, that dies. We'll go back to the original motion.
Ready for discussion?
Discussion.
$50,000 is a lot of money for us. And I have to tell you right off the top, I don't think this board services county in the way it should. Two supervisors go out above and beyond their efforts to kind of run the county. They're digging their hole awfully deep. I'm really disappointed that we all knew that what we were signing up for and how much we were getting paid and how long we would get paid for that. I don't disagree in any way, shape, or form that the salary for this position should be in the $60,000s and you get rid of all the old white retired guys and gals that decide to run for this and get some new blood in here, which is desperately needed. I do not think this board deserves an extra $10,000 a year per supervisor. And I'm very disappointed in this board for wanting to move forward with it.
Okay, any other discussion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
I think I totally disagree with what Mr. Finley's just said. I think I agree with, I'm not re-elected actually too, and I'm not going to get into this, but I think this board is, I think it's not even enough money for the people that have put in all the time here. I think it's actually pretty sad. I think that, you know, you have Shasta over here giving over $55,000, you have Hamboldt at $90,000, and Mendocino at the $50,000. I hate the fact that they keep getting compared to Tahama. I like to think we're a lot better than Tahama. So I think that this is really putting the county down. And I approve of this completely, and I think it's still underpaid. So I just, I think we're better than Tahama. We're about to get appellations. We want to get out like Mendocino and Sonoma. And I think we need to, you know, be proud of ourselves. So I think so.
I have not had one person contact me in the negative on this. I have only had people call and actually seemed excited for the pay increase for the board supervisors. So I want to say thank you. Thank you for all the people that have taken the time to contact me. That input is very important because it is your money. So I appreciate the fact that you feel that we're worthy of it. So thank you.
And I just would like to concur with Supervisor Chablis, I too have received calls, so thank you for that reminder to say that in the positive.
Well, since we're all talking about it, I'll jump in. It's always very awkward for somebody to try to get their own raises, and it's not, it's an unfair situation for the board to be put in that position. I have tasked the CAO to come up with a plan for future boards that this is tied to some other, it could be another unit or other, some other means so that the board is not put in this position of having to give itself a raise. So with that, we hope to have this solved in the future at some later date. All right. No further comment?
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chablis?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
No.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Aye.
All right, we're on to 3.5. Yes, we've got a requested five-minute break. We'll make it, we'll make it 10 minutes and be back at 10:50.
Thank you.
All right, we convene back on 3.5. Take the following action in Behavioral Health Department, effective November 1st, and direct that said changes be made to the allocation of physician listing. Number one, approve the job description salary range and add departmental physician listing to Behavioral Health Deputy Director dash Quality Assurance at range M244. And, number two, modify the allocation list in the VHS Department dash Behavioral Health Division to read 3.5 Behavioral Health Deputy Director dash Quality Assurance. And, three, modify the allocation list in the VHS Department dash Alcohol and Other Drug Division to read 3.5 Behavioral Health Deputy Director dash Quality Assurance. And, four, delete the allocation of the Behavioral Health Assistant Director from both the Behavioral Health and Alcohol and Other Drugs Divisions. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for Behavioral Health Deputy Director Quality Assurance at Step A is $9,071.
I typically give you the long, long wordy ones.
Yes, you're killing me.
So last night, it was discovered as well, I wanted to make a correction on this item. So on number two, we wanted to change the allocation to read, instead of 3.5, it would be 0.8 for the Behavioral Health Division. And number three, we would reduce 3.5 to 0.2 to the AOB Division, which would equal the 100%. Can you say that last one again, I'm sorry? So it'd be 80% for number two, 20% for number three, 0.2. So Trinity County Behavioral Health had two of their upper managers leave the agency in July of 18. They have experienced declining revenues over the past several years and felt that at this time it was time to reduce the total number of managers within the agency. They did fund an assistant director position, but there's no plan to recruit or fill that role this fiscal year. The MHSA manager position was not funded in 18-19 as a way to also save revenue. Both positions will be available for future use as needs in the agency, if the agency, of course, changes. Behavioral Health would like to create a new management county classification where, if you see on the organizational chart, you would have a director and then just three deputies, no assistant. And this would be the third of the deputy positions over Quality Assurance. I've listed in the staff report myriad of duties that that individual would be serving. Behavioral Health has realized savings by not filling two vacant manager positions and by adding this new job description, the result would be restructuring of duties within the agency that would allow all critical tasks to be addressed with no new costs or funding source necessary.
Any questions?
Yes, Joe. On your org chart, are you, is one of your goals to help with succession coming up the line? It looks like that? So this is the department's organizational chart that they're creating and proposing. And yes, they're trying to reduce having several managers, reducing it down to just three, eliminating the potential of having an assistant. And then certainly, there's always succession opportunities with the department. Yeah, it looks like instead of going horizontally, you're going more vertically. Correct. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Speaking to Deb?
I agree with the recommendation, as you know, maybe health isn't valued by its medical billable, and this will increase our ability to ensure that we are billing at proper rates so we can avoid paying back if we have to deal with, when they audit me, to pay back if we don't go correctly, and this will ensure a better compliance.
All right, anybody from the public have any comment? With that, I'll bring it back to the board.
Motion to approve 3.5 as presented with the changes in paragraph labeled 2 from 0.5 to 0.8, and paragraph labeled 3, 0.5 to 0.2 with those corrections.
Okay. Any further discussion? Would that all signify, all in favor, signify by Saint I?
Aye.
Aye.
Those, same sign? All right, on to 3.6. Take the following action in Transportation and Planning Department, effective March 1st, 2018, and direct that said changes be made to the allocation of physicians' listings. One, approve the job description salary range and add the department physician listing a code compliance lead worker at range G211. And, two, modify the allocation list in the Transportation Department dash Building and Developmental Service Division to read 3.5 Code Compliance Specialist 1/2 or Code Compliance Lead Worker. And, three, modify the allocation list in the Planning Department dash Canvas Division to read 3.5 Code Compliance Specialist 1-2 or Code Compliance Lead Worker. And, four, pursuant to Trinity County Code Section 2.60.360, reclassify the employee to Code Compliance Lead Worker at range G211/StepG. And, five, delete the project coordinator classification from the Transportation Department Building and Developmental Service Division allocation of listings. Approximate cost and salary and benefits per month for Code Compliance Lead Worker at Step A is $6,770, and at Step G is $8,808.
So when we developed the code, I'm sorry, the Canvas Division we had created and the board had approved back in December of 2017, two new job descriptions were the Code Compliance Specialists 1 and 2. We actually have a current incumbent employee who is classified as a project, I just lost the position. the position, project coordinator. But they were assuming this lead worker role and position. It just took us a little bit longer to develop the lead worker position. We had to meet and confer with the union. The union has no objection after reviewing this of the incumbent being reclassified to the new position and has been meeting those minimum requirements. And it's being requested and stated that we would like to reclassify this individual adopting the new job description as well and placing them at step G.
Good. Questions?
Yes. Thank you. I know this looks like a lot of hard work. Under the results for 2.60.420, it says clear, there's a lot of, it's overlapping. I can't read it. So also, in reading the descriptions of this position, it appears to me, and I guess my question is to you, why is it under this and not under management?
Well, the divisions are very management-heavy to begin with, and a lead worker is a classification we have in a few different classification series which does supervise, but doesn't necessarily operate as a full management position. That was the decision that was made through the development of this organizational chart of the department, and it's a worthwhile position having in a classification series.
Rick, it looks like you want to answer that question also?
Yes, when I review sections for management, what we're looking for, we're looking...
I'm sorry, but if you could back up just a little, it hurts.
Sorry.
Sorry.
I was yelled at the other night for not speaking.
You didn't have that mic.
What we look for is, we look for sections or groups. For instance, over in Building and Development Services, we have four groups. We have cannabis, building, planning, and environmental health. And so what these, what this position is, is a subgroup within that group. The managers rest with the overall assistant director or director, and then a manager for each one of those subgroups. But this position is even below that subgroup, so that's why it's not a management position. Then I'd end up with more, equal or more than half a staff at management if I were to make all lead workers managers.
Any further questions, Mike?
But he's managing two people under him, correct? He's supervising.
He's supervising. What the lead worker position is, is essentially I have three people that have the similar or same skill sets. One might be more experienced than the others, but what I want to do is I want to have one person have the ability to set the schedule of the day, to answer questions if things get caught up, or to be the one that takes charge out in the field. The lead worker position is, knowing all through the system, I have lead workers both in the Road Department and several other of the things that I do. And really also, the lead worker is, it's supposed to be a guy that's kind of in charge of everybody out in the field or of a small group. And it's not, it's what we would call entry-level management, but it's not classified in the management union. Management union really is meant to be someone that is a section head or a assistant to the director.
We also have lead workers in Health and Human Services and some of the Merit System division, divisions, not just in maintenance and labor positions.
So the union didn't want this as a management?
They had asked if it's something that we would want it to be, and we met and conferred on the item and all agreed collectively that a lead worker is the appropriate position for this improvement question.
Anybody else? All right. Open to the public to ask any questions on this item. With that, we'll bring it back. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor of 3.6 as written? Signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? All right. On to 3.7. Intervise and waive the reading of an ordinance that amends Trinity County zoning ordinance 315 by amendment in section 43.2 regarding cannabis manufacturing, unknown fiscal impact.
I need to recuse myself.
Okay. All right. Mr. Martin's got it.
So board members, if you recall, the manufacturing ordinance was approved sometime in early August, if I recall correctly. As a result of that conversation, there were some items we needed to further explore and amend, and it went to the Planning Commission, I believe in September. And so I will hit some of these highlights. I'm sure Leslie could fill in some technical issues if questions are asked. So if you recall, we, at the time, the state was looking at shared-use facility for manufacturing. So this is kind of comparable in some way to a shared-use commercial kitchen, which many of us have heard about over the many years. But this is solely related to cannabis production for license type six, type N, type seven. So for shared-use facility, you will have to have that approved by, of course, go through the planning process to have that facility approved to accommodate shared-use functions. The other part of this is using that shared-use facility as a, let's say, a cultivator, kind of, and Leslie, you may have, I'm going by memorandums, but you would just have this other layer of your cultivating license to use that shared-use facility on those specific licenses, if I recall. So, and I don't...
Can I just jump in?
Yeah, yeah.
Try to be assisting. Under shared-use facility, there is two different things, and it's very confusing that you have to focus on. One, you have a shared-use facility, and that person gets an approval from the state and us to be a shared-use facility. And then, but the type S shared-use license actually goes to the user. So you have manufacturer and the user, and the shared-use type S goes to the user who then can use the shared-use facility.
Right, I've gotten to type S, yeah. But thank you.
So as Supervisor Groves pointed out, type S would be for the user of that shared-use facility. I think we also looked at... That didn't change from the last time. I'm looking at something that did not get amended, so bear with me. And we have looked at some appropriate fees to these facilities as well and to that type S license. Type six, type seven, type N licenses who wish to register as a shared-use facility shall obtain a conditional use permit before starting operations. That goes back to my point of going through that planning process. Type six license, those who wish to operate under that could be met to qualify under director's use permit. So it's a little bit shorter of a process for type six. We also have some phases that determine whether you would be a director's use permit or have to go over into a conditional use permit, and that is listed on page 6 of 9. Some of these similar issues are amount of full-time employees you have, how much traffic, and that kind of is a determination on whether you will move into the, from the director's use permit to the conditional use permit. And I think, and I'll have Leslie fill in if I missed anything, or Supervisor Groves, we've looked at accommodating folks who may want to move from one license type to another, and that is on page 7 of 9. On page 8 of 9, you'll notice the type S fees, no fee for Trinity County Commercial Cannabis licenses. So if you're a license holder in Trinity County, there's no fee to have a type S license. All other users would be 2,000. The application for a shared-use facility is 1,500. Transfer fee to a new applicant is 1,000, and transfer fee to a new site is 60 percent of the original license fee, prorated monthly. And then the renewal of the original license fee is 60 percent. So we kind of broke up the license fee types, fees a little bit more and hopefully a little bit more accommodating. The other thing we wanted to emphasize, so people don't find themselves in a pickle, is that please do not engage in improvements on your site or building before your application and your permit process is approved. We have found in certain areas that people have started their process without final approval. So Leslie, I am going to see if I've missed anything, or Supervisor Groves?
Yes. So under the allowable zoning districts, we did expand the type six N and P to Ag Forest.
Oh, thank you.
And then for, we expanded into rural residential and unclassified for micro businesses with the type of six, maybe in those, for micro businesses only. And I believe, let's cover it there. So you have, oh, the addition of the Coffee Creek Train Center, Lewiston Park, began in an opt-out zone. And it's start later, but it's start real.
So that's the highlight. Leslie, do you want to weigh in on anything that we might have missed?
No, but I'll take questions.
Okay.
So it's just a request, it's not a question. C cannabis manufacturing facilities shall not be allowed within the following areas. It'd be really nice, we're talking about the Bucktail subdivision, if we could just put that, because I think people reading it, I know I've mentioned it before, when you're just reading the longitude and we don't know what we're talking, I mean, very few people are going to know that that's the Bucktail subdivision. So if that be, without any objections to, for the chair, just to maybe in parentheses, add Bucktail subdivision.
I will say that this, this doesn't have the Bucktail subdivision, and this is the Lewiston Community Service District, a portion of their service district that's been opted out.
Okay. When I asked last time, I was told it was the Bucktail subdivision.
This one is not. The Bucktail on other issues was.
Okay, so you just made my point really clear. Maybe we can have some identifying marker if this is not the Bucktail, whatever we commonly call it, just makes it, I'm not going to go pull out a map and look longitude, no.
So we do have this on the website, do we just, what do we call it on the website?
There are maps of opt-out areas.
Well, I know there's maps, but what do we call that zone?
Because it's a point well taken, if we just call this the Lewiston opt-out or the Bucktail opt-out or the train center.
But you're not including the Bucktail.
That was actually overlooked.
We call it the Lewiston Community Services District. That's what we have as that opt-out, that is the label on that opt-out area. Does anyone want to round something out?
Well, if we come back, yes.
Thank you. That was, it's great. Awesome work.
Any other questions?
No.
But we will make sure, along with the description.
Just the common, common name, yeah.
The what?
On the Bucktail or the other one.
Because actually, when I read it, I'm like, oh, they're talking Bucktail.
Right.
Okay. Any public comment?
Can I ask you a quick one? If you have the S, is it good at any shared facility or is it to a designated shared facility that you can use?
My understanding through the state is it, is it any shared-use facility? Wait a minute?
Yeah, if you have a type S license that is for non-volatile manufacturing, you can go to a shared-use facility that allows volatile or non-volatile. However, if you have a volatile license, you cannot go to a shared-use facility that is only for non-volatile. So it goes to the highest use.
Okay.
Leslie, can you clarify that that's an agreement between the share, the S license and the manufacturer? That's not the county, can you explain that? Correct. The S licensees make their agreements, their arrangements with shared-use facility licensees. And the difference also, there's a slight difference between us and how the state is handling the shared-use facility. The state registers, here's the facility, they register that facility, and then you as the licensee come and use that facility.
Right.
Okay, now what we are doing with the county is we're saying we want a license for this as well. The shared-use facility will have a license, and there will be a conditional use permit required for all shared-use facilities because it's a facility and there is, there are impacts that are going to be assumed with that. And so those will be carried, those will be handled through the conditional use permit process. But at the state level, this shared-use facility just goes through a registration process. There's not a license for it.
Oh, okay, okay.
But you will end up, if this is something you are going to do, you're going to end up, if you want to use a shared-use facility, you'll get an S license with us, you'll get an S license with the state.
Right, okay. And there's no cost here at the county level, but the state?
If you're cultivator, correct. Trinity County cultivator, correct.
All right, thank you very much, that's been a help.
All right, any other public comments? I thought you were going to say something, Shelley.
Oh, sorry.
All right, with that, we'll come back to the board. I have a question for Bucktail to be in, put in, would it have to go back to the commission at this time?
It just looked at the Planning Commission in terms of what they looked at, and they did look at opt-outs, so that they, they had the opportunity to look at potential additional opt-outs. So it would not need to go back to them since it already addressed the issue of opt-outs.
So at this time, I would request that we, I'm not sure how we clear up the Lewiston Community Service District, because we mentioned that, but the same thing that we would add Bucktail in, even though I don't think anything in Bucktail would be able to follow this, but I might as well be consistent.
I suppose changing the formatting of it, just so it stands out visually a little bit more, might be helpful?
Yes, sure.
I was just going to say the Planning Commission has been pretty consistent on the opt-outs, and we have some language that fits that. I will forward it to the county council and make sure it gets incorporated.
I think if you just added a C under C, I think you're done.
All right.
All right.
I do?
All right, so, a second.
And that's with the changes.
With the changes, yes.
With the changes, okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, oh, four minutes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Yes.
All right. With that, after we mixed everything up, I think I've still got everything done. All right, closed session. Item 4.1. Item four point one, Government Code Section five four nine, five four point five, Conference of Legal Counsel, dash existing litigation. Number case is two, Peeny versus Finley, Superior Court Case sixteen CB oh six eight, Ware versus White, Trinity County Superior Court, one seven CB zero nine one. Four point two, Government Code Section Public Employee Appointment, Sheriff slash coroner. Any comments?
Hi, good morning. Happy Election Day. Diane Richards from Hayfork. I'd like to comment on the Peeny versus Finley case. You have quite a big legal bill, legal bill fee that you paid, and I don't know even what it is right now, it could be over two hundred thousand at this point. I don't know if you're aware that all of that is simply for hearings up to this point. You're looking at a two week, maybe even more, a two week trial. There's so much involved, it's a very complicated trial. So if you've already spent, just on hearings, these hearings, I think the most one lasted was a half an hour, have come to this point, there's a huge trial production preparation, all kinds of different meanings that are going to occur, your witness, your document preparation, et cetera, that's going to go in, plus the trial. It's going to cost a fortune. Mr. Finley can pay for this. According to his Form seven hundred that he files with the Fair Political Practices Commission, he makes over two hundred thousand just on two of his properties a year. Why is it the county of Trinity, general funds, the taxpayer, paying for his legal fees? This is a conflict of interest. He voted for it for himself. I think he even did motions for it in the very beginning. And that wasn't the beginning, it was under the table before, it was not even on the agenda. I mean, you guys are really in a deep hole right now, but to, you're looking at a huge, huge cost in this trial. There's many multiple attorneys involved, there's so many witnesses because of the voters, and the amount of violations at the last hearing that the judge had, where she looked at most of the violations, which were forty-eight pages worth, she asked if even half of this is true, is there an ongoing criminal investigation? I think some of you should start attending so you know what you're really stepping into. I don't know what the county council is telling you or Churchill and White, or if they tell you anything, because Finley is actually their client, but you're looking at a huge bill, and that means us, we the people, are paying that bill. So please think about that when you make decisions on this case. It's really about the contestant against the defendant, which is the candidate, not the supervisor. And you're going to soon find that out, if it has to go all the way to the appellate court. And why you even spent money at the appellate court is in question, because what did you care? The county care, why did you spend all that money with Churchill and White at the appellate level when it was a question of was it five days or thirty days for the filing? That's ridiculous that we spent that kind of money, the county, just at the appellate level for a matter of law. Thank you.
I have a question on the sheriff. Since when the DA was elected, we just automatically put him in when the current DA was made a judge, so I don't understand why we want to put Chris in there if Tim's going to weigh in with seventy percent, so I think, I think that he should just be put in there.
Thank you, Joe. Any other public comment? You have something? Okay, with that, we're going to go into close. Thank you for coming.
We're on.
On item four point one, direction was given to staff. Item four point two, the, we will set a meeting for Friday at eleven o'clock, awaiting the results of the election, and we will be at that point to see if we will appoint her or not. Is that proper?